Call to order for the City of Cannon Falls Joint City Council and Planning Commission Work Session for Thursday, October 9th, 2025. If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Go ahead.
I got a motion from Jeff, a second from Lisa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Tonight, we are going to get a presentation from Tract, talking about the potential data center. They will go through the presentation with slideshow format. Council on the DIES, Planning and Zoning Commission, feel free to ask questions. We'd like to keep them until the end of each segment. And then, if you have one that you forgot, save it till the very end. But they will go through on their pace, and feel free to ask questions. If it is so dire, just raise your hand, they will help things out. All right. John, do you want to do the introductions?
Yeah, I'll lead us off and introduce, pass it off to them. But I do want to, I want to just talk about just the long, kind of the long-range side of this, or all the, how we've gotten here. So, I think it was a year ago today, the city got a, like, it was publicly announced that they were working with the DIES, this data center, Tract, on a data center project, and that, you know, we were going to, you know, be working through that to get to the point that we're kind of here. So I don't think anybody at that moment thought this was going to be a year-long process. I wasn't even employed here yet. I think we were just about doing the interview process. But in December, when I came online, I actually was able to sit in in some earlier meetings. But from where we started to what we have presented today has been, has been a journey of a lot of conversations between city staff, the council, the planning commission, the inputs that we've had in council meetings, in the A U A R, public comment process, a lot of other conversations with the community meeting that Tract hosted, other community engagement that has happened, has really kind of guided the stuff that, the results of what you see in the presentation. So I want to, I would say from my perspective that this isn't just Tract's work, this has been, you know, things that the city has been a part of as well. And from where we started in terms of concept and trying to drill down and talk about the needs of the city versus the needs of this project and what, where we can be, there were a lot of moments in which, if this wasn't going to work out, this, in terms of, for Tract as a developer, for the city, as the requests that are being made as part of these upcoming agreements that we're going to be discussing, I think both parties could have mutually said, hey, we agree this isn't going to work for us. But we're here today because we have concluded and worked together to address the things that have been concerns of the city, that we've not only heard from our residents, but have addressed in terms of our technical expertise, and from the attorney's side, to the engineering side, to the staff's side, to try to get, and, you know, no one take it lightly, or want this to be a term that constitutes negative, but the best deal for our residents. And I think in the end, if this is approved, like, I think that is something that's going to serve the community really well for a very long time. So, you know, we'll hear, you know, some more to that tonight versus, in the information that will be presented and from them, and we can certainly speak to that from our perspective. So if the staff has questions, or council has questions of staff, now please ask those. But we are, it's been a long journey, and we're finally kind of getting to those critical steps. So I know for some people, it's feeling like this is really quick, and they haven't heard much, but they haven't been in the depths and the number of meetings and conversations that we've engaged in, and the hours and hours and hours of work that's been put in to get to, to get to this point. So with that, I will, Kristen, I think you probably lead us off, and probably don't need more introductions, because you've been here many times.
For the record.
Yes.
Kristen Dean with Tract. Good to see you all again. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to do this work session, because I think what we all realize is that when we are in the public meetings, the public hearings, there's a lot of questions that come up, and we saw that at the last planning commission meeting. And it's challenging to try to go into the level of detail that we would all like to be able to go into in that setting. And so we thought that this work session would be the best forum to really drill down into your questions. And ideally, like, the goal is that when, after the work session tonight, which we intend to have good engagement, you know, from all parties, that really you feel like your questions have been answered. And if something hasn't been, then we'll continue to work on that and bring that information forward to you. We're really focused tonight on addressing a lot of what we heard at the planning commission, the planning commission meeting, both from the commission and from the public. And so we spent the last several weeks going through all of that to make sure we're really, you know, bringing you forth that, the information that I think everyone is looking for. So I have a number of people here tonight to speak with the Tract team, Philip Sandino and Ethan Marks, Jake Steem with Larkin Hoffman, we have Patricia and Mike Brandt from Kimley Horn, and Blair McNeil, who is the campus director with Mortenson Construction. So the agenda, just kind of going to do a little bit of, you know, where we are in the process. Also, kind of just talk about some of the updates to the website, and walk through economic benefits, jobs, zoning, and PUD, the regulatory oversight, the many layers that are there, and then the deep dive into water and wastewater, and end on where we are with the development agreement terms. Because also at the planning commission meeting, we hadn't, we were, you know, 75% of the way through the development agreement, but still had some more work to do, and I think we're very, very close now, so we're able to talk more about that. And that really establishes all of the commitments that we're making and puts them in an enforceable document. So as a reminder, we do have a separate website. That website has our email and our phone number on there to reach out for any members of the public that want to have a conversation with us and that want to talk to us. We are available. We also have updated our FAQs on the website as well. So just a reminder that that's out there for information for the public. So I'm just going to quickly go over some of the public benefits, or the economic benefits that will be realized, because we have heard a lot of questions about, you know, what are the tax, what is the tax generation going to be? And it's all a function of how much can be built on-site. And so under the current proposal, and the horizontal and vertical building development that can occur on-site with all of the other site constraints, we're expecting that this data center campus would generate over $30 billion. It would, it would, it'd be an investment of $30 billion into this campus over 20 years. Essentially, based off of the City of Cannon Falls tax structure, that would bring $30 million of revenue to the city over a 20-year period. We do have that ramp. And so this 20-year period, that's not the life of the project. That's just, we don't project into perpetuity. It just shows you what the next 20 years looks like. Again, we have that ramp. There's some additional fees that are going to be coming to the city ahead of the real ramp and the tax dollars, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit. But there's also, not just the tax dollars that come to the city, and how the city can use those tax dollars for road improvements, for capital improvements, parks improvements, et cetera, but there's the indirect economic benefits that come with this kind of development, through the jobs that are created, through the people that are coming here. Blair and Philip will talk about that a little bit more. And, you know, this is, while this is a new use in Cannon Falls, and certainly Minnesota's in the early stages of seeing this type of development, there are a lot of studies that are, that have been completed by independent third-party analysis. In states where there are a lot of data centers, and there is a lot of data center development, such as Virginia, such as Iowa and Ohio, and they can directly correlate the economic, the indirect economic benefits of a data center to the local community and the region. So there are estimates anywhere between three and six indirect jobs are created from every one direct job in a data center. And I use that range because there's different studies out there, and I, you know, don't want to go so high. So just kind of want to touch on that. That's, that's where you see this ramp here, the taxes that will be generated for the city, and, you know, the, just the additional economic benefits that will come forward. So I'll pause there before we go into the jobs piece. If there's any questions about that, and then I'm going to pass the mic to Philip.
Any questions for that segment? All right.
Okay.
Mayor, council, staff, thanks for having me. Philip Sandino, I'm the SVP of Utility Development for Tract. I'm going to take an opportunity to talk, we've shown data before on jobs, I'm going to take an opportunity to tell story here about what's going to come pre-development, during development, and then during sustaining operations. And then I'm going to be followed by Blair McNeil from Mortenson, who's going to talk about construction, because it's, as the construction impacts are very large, and they mean a lot to the local economy, and also to the local people who are going to be working here on this project. So, you know, I talk in terms of employment, entrepreneurship for your community, and local business growth. So there's a large requirement for human capital from the, from the data centers. I think what you'll see, and maybe we're in this process right now, but, you know, us, the developers, we engage with local legal, engineering, and technical resources to tell our story and to do evaluations. And we have, you know, of the resources we put in, you know, the time we put in here, we've been doing it with, you know, Kimley Horn, Larkin Hoffman, who are here with us tonight, as just some examples. We're also engaged with some AFCON, which is a data center, like, organization here in Minnesota, as well as Seven by Twenty-Four. And so, you know, trying to build that ecosystem of data center, construction management here, and, you know, make this go forward. At the early project commencement, let's just say we, you know, we approved this, and we start to, you know, to have analysis done on the, on the land and start to work, you're going to see significant increase in demand for hotels, for restaurants, catering services, and other services, you know, like office-type things that aren't maybe here right now, start to form. And that's going to spur entrepreneurship, because you'll see a demand, and people in the community will grow to have these businesses that are going to support this. You know, I've seen it in other areas where I've worked, and it's very consistent. As construction begins, local services, excavation, hauling, equipment rentals, home rentals, apartment rentals, and things like that, that will start to come into man, and will be required to grow as the project grows. At full construction, and this is where Blair's going to talk, but there will be local business demand made by the thousands of tradespeople who are going to be here, as well as technical and business personnel, personnel who are going to be on-site, who will travel to the site, you know, not unlike we're doing right now, and others who are going to relocate to the area, because this is going to be a significant project that will be in place for years. When you finish construction, or as you're finishing construction, we enter into a phase called commissioning. And as, as tradespeople roll off, other technicians and factory personnel show up to put equipment into service. So during that commissioning, there will also be the end-users, so the customers will start to populate the data center with full-time personnel, and they will commission the site. And then at the end of the commissioning, that's when you go into sustaining operations. And in that, there's going to be hundreds of new full-time jobs, there's going to be contractors, contractor employees needed to operate, maintain, and upgrade for the life of the project. As Kristen has said, Price Waterhouse Coopers, who is a, you know, like, an accounting firm, but they did some studies and said that in general, in the markets where they studied, Arizona, Ohio, Virginia, they saw three to five outside jobs created, you know, permanent full-time jobs created for every one job inside of a data center. So it is a multiplying effect. Think of the campus of this size, you can expect to see mechanical contractors and electrical contractors seek to build offices in the local area, because to come down from Minnesota, or to come, you know, the other way from Rochester, is kind of wasting time. And so you'll see people wanting to relocate here to services project. I'm going to stop there to see if you have any questions, because I do have a little bit more.
I guess, so I've heard two different stories here. One is that when the data centers are up, it's a ghost town, there's 10 people working, three per shift. Then I've heard the other side, where it's just like any other business, you have security clearances for certain sections, you have management, you have people in the office, and it's 24/7, so you have three shifts of, say, 20, 30, 40 people, whatever they are. Where is that?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. If you'll bear with me, I'll go onto the slide, and I'm going to tell you who's going to be on-site.
Thanks.
And we'll talk about numbers about that, too. But any other questions on that? Thank you, appreciate the question. So in the, so what's my background in this, right? Why should I answer this question? Because I was a vice president of operations for NTT data centers. And so all these crews, you know, worked in my organization when I ran data centers. So I didn't have to, like, pull this out of the book, I actually just wrote it down, right, because I know it, because these folks worked for me. So if you picture, this is a real estate operation, right? You're going to have land, you're going to have buildings. And so if you think about a bank building, or a hotel, or an office building, you'll see CBRE or JLL, right, that runs the building. So the real estate teams will be on-site. That's probably going to be mainly a daytime type of activity, but you're going to have operations of the building, plumbing, the roofs, the doors, the custodial, the groundskeeping, that is what we consider real estate professionals. And so those people will run the buildings themselves, you know? If a door's broken, you call them, you put a ticket in, same thing you would do in an office building. Though, you know, I don't know, a big campus like this, it's going to be a lot of people. There's going to be a lot of, not everything's going to be full-time work, a lot of that's going to be contracted in. Imagine groundskeeping is going to be, you know, a couple times a week, but, but there's, those people have to be around on-call, because security doors and all that must be maintained. There can be no downtime on those things. So there's, there's going to be plenty of people doing that type of work. Critical facility teams. Now, what that means is, you work inside the building, but you don't work on the building. You work on the electrical and the mechanical system, so the cooling, the electrical, these are the 24/7 people that staff the data center for the critical operations. So the, you know, anything that breaks, if the power rig out, the gens came on, these are the teams that respond to that. So that's, that's typically, you know, on a building, that's going to be four or five people per shift, running 24/7, that are going to lead that. Then you have a hierarchy, you know, you'll have a site director, and then managers for each building, so there's management associated with that, too. And then, you know, who are those people? Those people come from trades, a lot of military, Navy nukes are very prominent in the industry. I'm a Navy conventional operator, I've, you know, also made my way in the, in the business. And then there's a group called Army Prime Power, which, you know, they run microgrids out in the, in the field. For the Army, those are also just, just kind of typical who you could see in this. So I'm really focused on veterans, because I am one, and also from tradespeople, because I used to be one. I think that there's a lot of, and this is quality work. This is really wonderful, thought-provoking, satisfying work. Then you have teams called network operations. And so what I've described so far is nothing to do with computers, nothing to do with servers. So network operations personnel run the server. So if, if a mission gets installed, you put a bunch of computers in, they're working, when they don't work, you need somebody to respond to that. So again, 24/7, usually the size of that crew mirrors the critical facility operations, because the mission cannot go down. So you'll have several people per shift with supervisory that'll, that, you know, work across regions to, you know, if a server breaks down, go in and pull it, and, you know, they call a rack stack, and you put a new one in. And, you know, those, that type of person, very similar, a lot of critical facility people move over to network ops, but, you know, generally, you could have people with college degrees in there. Also, trade schools and military is very common for those type of roles. And then last is physical security, because each, you mentioned security, right? So every, the boundary of the campus, and then each individual building, security is probably like the number-one sales point for any customer that wants to put data into a data center. If they feel like it's not secure, they're not going in. And so the security team usually number the same type of numbers as critical facility, because you're, you know, you're doing the, you're monitoring the technical security around the building, but also making rounds and making sure that, you know, things are clear and letting people in and out of secure rooms. So, you know, a campus, you know, I'm not going to say numbers, because they're in the other information we had, but, you know, you can see where a large building is, you know, multi-story building is going to have during the day, is going to have quite a few people in it. You know, and I'm not talking about the customer people, these are the people that actually run the building. The customer or the end-user whose data's in there is also going to be in this, and their numbers are usually similar to the numbers that are run in the actual building. So I'm with the first number you said, not the, not the second number. Or maybe it's vice versa, I'm not with the zero, you know, or the, it's not a skeleton. I've not, I've not so far seen a skeleton crew run an operational data center. You know, it's, it's quite a few people. And there's, there's a, you know, a big battle in the industry to find those people, right, to get them. And I think this, you know, for, you know, for me, if I'm a veteran, I'm from this area, and I want to come back to a great job, these are great jobs. These are really great.
Yeah, with security, I mean, it's rumors going around that the cops will have to be up there. And you're saying you have your own security, your private security is going to be there.
Well, I would say the pedigree is for, you know, we do look for police officers, and we do look for security personnel, whether they be federal or state or local, to have that sort of background to come in and do this sort of work, but it's also a great contribution.
No, I meant like, instead of patrolling the streets, they'll be up there patrolling the data center during the.
No, I hope that anybody says that, you would tell them they're going to be absolutely wrong. It's not that the police are not welcomed, but they're, but I don't think that they would be needed unless it's an event, just like any other thing.
Sure.
This is built in, it is a, it is a critical function of, is competitive advantage, and is required for data centers to have their own physical security. And there's, there's whole organizations dedicated to these people, you know, working together, and, you know, having a, a trade organizations or things like that, you know, dedicated to this. But no, these people will be, they can be employees, but they can also be from a contract security firm, depending on how companies run this, but regardless, 24/7 inside the facility.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to ask, you have, earlier you said, you know, restaurants, hotels, everything's going to be needed for everything that's here. Has this been done in this small little community to have this campus, as you call it? It's way bigger than what is around it. I've looked online, I've seen these data centers, they're up around metro areas and things like that.
Right, right.
So you bring the people in, you get the hotels going, you get the restaurants going, you get everything going, and then these people, if they don't stay, what happens to the hotels, to the restaurants, and everything? Or do you, have you got anything that shows that the people that started work with these data centers, after five, six years, 25, 30% of them stayed in the town? Something to that effect? Or can you tell me that there's a town our size, that there's a data center in somewhere around?
Yeah, I think, well, maybe, I don't, there are, I've seen it myself in Virginia, where there was like, a lot of growth around the data centers. But Castroville, Texas, I don't know if you know Texas at all, but Castroville's that side of San Antonio. And, you know, when I was a kid, Castroville was really nothing, you just kind of drove through it. But several hyperscalers have put data centers there, and that town has, has really grown significantly, and there's a lot of business out there, and there's, and it, again, it's west of San Antonio, that was never a traffic pattern before, and now it is, because there's a lot of work out there for, for these people that I'm talking about. And it's been sustained, it's been years now, it's been, you know, probably in a decade that that town has grown. So that's just an example, but I think that, you know, the data centers don't go away. Every, like, everyone I've ever seen is, it's still there, you know? And it may be like, maybe not as popular, or maybe it's not as efficient, but they don't go away. We can't, because right now, there's a big gap on inventory for data centers, so we can't afford to let data centers go, because we can't build them fast enough for the demand for the industry.
So just to give you a count of your talk about Texas, what it started as before the data center there, what was its population, what is the population up to now?
I can, I will get you an answer. I will send it. And because I did this recently, because I think it may have, it may have been in this room, but one of the citizens asked me for, like, don't, don't tell me about Virginia, tell me someplace else that's kind of the size of this. And I, and I said something. I said, go look at Castroville, and I forgot the other one. But yeah, I'll send, and I'll actually just resend the email that I sent to her, because there's, there's, you know, real estate data before and after. It was really, actually, it was, the question might have been around home sale value, right? Like, it's going to make my home value drop, all the data's to the contrary, where it's gone significantly higher. So, but I'm happy to share, it's not my data, it's somebody else's data, but I'm happy to share that. Thank you for the question.
Any other questions right now? Dan?
And not necessarily question, more request. Would you be able to track throughout this, assuming, or if this project is approved and goes forward, would you be, would the company be able to track how many actual local people, businesses are being used throughout the construction and, and to the commissioning?
That would be a preference for a lot of reasons.
Finding, could you track, which doesn't help, help us decide now, but we could then, as we look back on it, or some other community wants to see, there would be actual data available?
Yeah, absolutely, because we have to know where people are coming from, when they come on the, on the job. But absolutely, but the expert is going to talk now, who's, you know, going to talk about construction. But absolutely, the preferences and just, you know, to have, you don't want to be bringing people in from the outside, not because they're outsiders, just because it's expensive, right? So the preference would be local, so.
Thank you, Philip.
Yes, sir. Blair McNeil?
Come on. My foot fell asleep on, I was sitting down, I just had to do a little bit of waggle. Hello, everyone. My name is Blair McNeil. I work for Mortenson Construction. And I'm here today because I'm the campus director, I'm working on a data center just north of Cannon Falls. It's a large hyperscale data center in Rosemount, Minnesota. I've been working on the project for almost, well, a little more than two years. We've been in construction for about a year and a half. And I want to talk a little bit about my experience working on that project, a little bit about the construction workers that are working on it, and a little bit of what I've learned and what I know about the full-time operation of the project after the construction's complete, and we turn over the project to the technology customer that owns the project. So I made some notes. I'm going to share some information with you, some of it you might already be familiar with, but I think it's just helpful to set a little bit of a baseline. The type of project that's being proposed or trying to be considered for Cannon Falls is a technology park, and is, and is part of that is a very large data center. Within the industry, we've kind of defined those data centers as hyperscale data centers. That's where the industry's been going for the last few years. Hyperscale means hundreds of megawatts of power is what it takes to provide enough power for all the data servers to work. And it, they are very large buildings. Now, the buildings themselves are only single-story buildings, so they're roughly 25, 30 feet tall, but they're pretty expansive in terms of square footage. So to put things in context, on the project that I'm working on, we have two data center buildings. One building is 350,000 square feet, and to put that in context, that's six indoor football fields. The other building is 300,000 square feet, that's five indoor footballs. So in aggregate, there's 11 football fields of indoor space. That's a lot of square footage. And most of that space is dedicated to computer servers and server racks. So again, if you've ever done a Google search, and I'm sure that Tract might have pictures here, it is tens of thousands of computer servers, and that's the programmatic use of these buildings. And so, and the reason why the data service is, we live more and more in the information And so and the reason why the data service is, we live more and more in the information age and so whether it's what people are using information on their cell phones, on their personal computers and their work computers, all that information is being saved somewhere. Everyone jokes and says it's in the cloud and we like to tell our family and friends it's really not up in the air, it's these two buildings. And so that's the project we're doing. Our project is roughly a two and a half year project and that's very common for these types of projects. When construction starts, we start to ramp up on our construction crews. Some of the things that Philip talked about, on our project to date, we've had 4,000 construction workers on our job site. In aggregate, I think through the whole course of the project, we'll probably peak out at a total of 5,000 people. And what that really means for the community is that's 5,000 construction workers that either got a job or were able to maintain their job over the duration that they worked on the project. Because there's multiple trades, should I click next to the next slide? Okay, I'm sorry. So the type of construction jobs that are most common on these projects, it's kind of as we build the project, so it's a lot of operators doing earthmoving and utility work on the project. We have steel erectors that are erecting precast and steel. And then it's a lot of carpenters, labors and finishers that are pouring concrete. And then as we get into the bigger jobs, our heaviest concentration of jobs is electricians and mechanical contractors, which is pipe fitters, plumbers and tenors, sheet metal technicians. And then as we finish off the spaces, it's a lot of small finishes, which could be tile work, painting, carpet. And then as we start to get ready the building to receive these computer servers, it's a lot of low voltage telecom communications cabling, which is kind of a subset of electricians. So of the four to 5,000 construction workers, we're averaging right now about 1,000 construction workers at our job site every single day. Those workers are coming from the metropolitan area. They're coming from the Twin Cities, they're coming from Cannon Falls, they're coming from Hastings, they're coming from Rochester. What we typically find is construction workers typically are comfortable driving up to 40 to 60 miles a day. It's dependent on the individual, but in our industry, it's not uncommon for a craft worker to drive 40 or 50 miles each way, one way to wherever the work needs to take them. And in our industry, we have to drive to where the work is. And so we have construction workers that are working on the job in Rosemount that either live in Cannon Falls or live south of Cannon Falls. They're coming through your community. So they keep, there is an ask and a lot of the craft workers, I don't want to say they're not big city people, but they're not big city people. They like to live in small communities, they like to hunt, they like to fish. This is where they want to raise their families. When we talk about the craft workers, it's not just a single person doing the work, it's their spouse that is either at home or is another earner. They have kids, they have extended families. So when you think about what the economic impact is to your community, it's not just a single worker, it's the family that comes with that worker. They're involved with youth sports, they're shopping and buying things in your community, they're involved with their church systems, your community groups. Construction workers, first off, I'm so proud of the construction workers that we have in the upper Midwest, specifically Minnesota and certainly, you know, in this area. We have a very strong construction union area. The construction workers working on your project will most likely be union workers. I know that Mortenson built the project, it will be a union project. The union project provides a super solid wage. You know, those wages, when you look at their base salary plus their unit benefits, averages anywhere from like $65 to $100 per person. And those people are getting for sure 40 hours a week. Most of them are getting overtime. Overtime is because we can't for these technology companies, we can't build the projects fast enough. And so we, when we set up the project, we actually set up the project to work five, 10-hour days. So our typical work week's 50 hours. And we do that for the full two years of duration. That allows us to get the job a little bit done a little bit faster. So again, when they work or live in your community, they're traveling to and from the job site, which means they're using your gas stations to replenish gas in their car, they're stopping and getting a quick bite to eat, they're using, you know, they're shopping in restaurants. There are lots of services that will be utilized if this project is to move forward in your community. It's things like we do a lot of catered lunches, we have a lot of safety lunches, we like to find local vendors. Sometimes we're doing printings of signs. And so in the end, we're, you know, we're utilizing businesses that are in your area that will help support the project for the duration of construction. The other thing that Philip talked about was there are construction workers that won't be in the immediate local area, but they are what we would call as travelers. Now, we've been fortunate on the Rosemount project site, I would say less than 10% of the job is travelers, but as you get further away from the core like downtown city areas, it takes more travelers to build a project. Those travelers need a place to live while they're living here. And again, they're shopping and using your grocery stores and your restaurants because they live in your community. I would expect the number of travelers would be slightly higher because of your geographic location, but again, the vast majority, you know, and I don't know the exact percentage, I don't know, 50, 60, 70% will be the local construction workforce that is driving to your community to build a job for the two and a half years it takes us to build the project. I'm going to stop to catch my breath, I have more notes to go through, but I want, I think, just offer a chance for questions before I go into more content.
What's the work hours? I guess you said 10-hour days. I mean, are you guys starting at 7:00 AM going 10 hours? What's kind of what you're doing in Rosemount, just so we know what to expect.
Exactly. So our hours on the project is it's a 10-hour day and it's 7:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon. Mortenson does a required bend and stretch every morning at 7:00, which means we get 1,000 people. Now, that's so many people, we have them split up in three different stretch and bend areas. We actually have craft tents that if you drive along County Road 42, you can see the craft tents from the road. And so we break them up into three groups and the stretch and bend lasts about 15 minutes. It's allow people to stretch, which is to get their muscles ready, they have their full PP on that shows that they're ready to work. And we're able to give communications to the craft about what to expect that day, what deliveries are happening, what what construction roads are closed, what events are coming up, Wednesdays as well as Wednesdays, we talk about, you know, how to, you know, they take care of themselves and at home as part of things. And then most workers work until 3:30 to 6:00 in the evenings. I say 4:30 to 5:00 is a pretty standard end time. I would say that we do have some craft that start a little early at 6:00 and some craft that either leave early or leave later, but in terms of like congestion for your roads, the vast majority of those people are coming in at 7:00 in the morning and they're leaving at 4:30, 5:00 in the afternoon.
What about if they're starting earlier, what about noise of even something that, are they the type of jobs that are not making noise or?
Well, every construction job will make noise. I would say the size of these projects, you're talking about hundreds of acres and usually the buildings are situated in the middle of the site. So let's just take like a typical skill saw. A skill saw, we don't have really have the jackhammers, but are a bit large power tools. That type of construction noise can range anywhere from 90 decibels to 100 decibels. After you go 300 feet away, which is roughly a football field and most of the projects are multiple football fields from any other like public spaces, after you go 300 feet, that sound dissipates down to 60 decibels, which is the same loudest as a conversation. So when people think of construction noise, really there's, I'm biased, I'm a construction person, you're really not having issues with construction noise impacting your community. The most the loudest things that happen on construction jobs is if you're having to do deep foundations like pile driving, a pipe in the ground, the bang, bang, bang. We're fortunate that I haven't seen the general technical soil ports, but we've had pretty really good stable soil that's shallow footing, so it's just poured concrete. We don't have driven piles that's making the noise. The other thing that's the latest noise is the construction equipment that's used for the earthmoving equipment, so dump trucks and then graders and the scrapers. And so you're probably familiar, it's not that much different than your farm equipment and the noise to farm equipment. Again, that sound dissipates as you get further away from where your where your community lives.
Do any employees live within 200 to 500 feet of a data center?
You mean the the construction workers or the full-time operational people?
Any of the both.
I don't know the answer to that question, it's a short answer, but I would comment that when I looked at a Google Maps, it looks like you've got a lot of farmland around where this proposed site is. I'm sure that there are some houses within a half a mile of that general area.
There's 250 feet and there's housing.
Okay.
Those are Cannon Falls members that moved over there that built housing?
I see. So again, I mean, the answer to the question is if someone's 250 feet away, they're hearing construction equipment. By the time you get to 300 feet, the sound should be less than a conversation. 200 feet, it might be a little, 250 feet might be a little bit louder, but I'll just leave it at that. You can interpret how you would that information to be.
I'll say one caveat to that. When you when you talk about the dump trucks and that, when they back up, they have that.
The backup alarms?
Yeah, that charming thing that I swear you can hear that 10 miles away.
Sure.
Or at least I certainly can.
Yep. These are all fair, legitimate concerns or comments. I will say from personal experience, there's not that much backup alarms on the job sites. The job sites are so big that we create construction roads inside the job sites that are, I don't want to say they're one-way, but it's inefficient to pull a truck in and have to back it up. I would say, I don't, 95% of the equipment is always just moving forward, but all fair comments.
A question on jobs and that. And this is something I don't understand for the whole plan. The first building is not anticipated until 2029.
Let's hold one second. I'm going to let Blair step away because we're getting into project specifics. So, thank you.
Well, it was going to be just what kind of jobs were there before 20, because I'm assuming he's talking about building jobs, right? Building jobs. So I was going to ask what jobs that are there between now and 2029 when the building starts.
So.
But you can just answer that too?
Yeah, sure. You know, as you're aware, we, the city's going to be constructing the water and wastewater lines to the site. So there's that construction that's going to occur. There's going to be grading internal to the site, there's going to be site prep. So I'll, you know, I can let Blair step back up, I just thought you were going into specifics on the on the project.
I was, I was following the agenda and asking about jobs and what's happening. Thank you.
Okay.
But it's all up to him to answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, so that.
My leg's not asleep.
I was, I was just trying to figure out that you were talking about the jobs that actually come in 2029 and following for the building. And then I was just trying to ask what kind of jobs are going to, there again, job noise between now and 2029.
Sure. I'm not, Track would have to speak on like what's what construction activities would be happened from now until the time that the general contractor would come in and secure the site and then start the, what I would call the main part of construction, whenever that project wants to start.
Thank you.
I have more content if that's, am I doing okay for terms of time and content?
You're great.
I know Philip talked about like what are the permanent jobs? I would say that I've I've become a little bit more familiar with what the permanent jobs are after construction. There will be several hundred jobs that are permanent, permanent jobs with whatever the technology customer that owns and operates this thing. The type of jobs, again, these are high, middle-class type earning jobs. And the other benefit is it's not necessarily like people needing a four-year degree to be qualified for these jobs. You see a lot of people with technical degrees or kind of work experience. It's a lot of people that are technicians. So again, Philip talked about it's they to run and maintain the building, it's a lot of people in the mechanical kind of techs and electrical techs. One of the things that people don't always appreciate is when you build a data center, it's not like it's built and it just stays stagnant for 20 years. The technology is always changing on these data servers. So the customer, whoever the customer is, will be constantly removing old data servers and putting new ones in. Whether that replacement happens every one year, three years or five years, it's all kind of within that window. They, these data servers have a life expectancy, so you're taking thousands of data centers out after they kind of are past their useful life and they're replacing them new with new ones. And so again, it's the operations to maintain those things. They do because they are 24-hour facilities, they are staffed 24 hours, but most of the staff have the normal working hours, 8 to 5 o'clock type of working hours because they're not time critical, they just have to be able to maintain the building to make sure that everything's functioning correctly so that if something was to break, they have people there that can fix it during second or third shift. Go ahead.
I guess, I don't want to get too far off track, but I know you were saying like, okay, the equipment turns over a ton, right? Do you ever see or have you seen, I mean, people improving their water consumption, I guess, because that's a huge concern for the town, right? It's like, well, how much water are you going to use and we've said enough, like it's going to be 40 million gallons. Do you see people that have a data center that they're operating that they own, hey, we're using too much water, it's inefficient, it costs us too much, we want to use half as much. Are they improving their systems, I guess? Have you seen that? Is that something that does happen?
Right. So I, there's always confidentiality in industrial projects. I have no idea what the design is for the project that's being proposed for your location. I will tough say that in the industry, because of people's concerns about sustainability, the design of data centers has become, has changed and the buildings themselves are more sustainable. I will say that the data center that I'm working on in Rosemount, that project in terms of water usage, it is a closed-loop water system that provides cooling. What closed-loop water system means is that once you fill the pipes with water, the water just gets recycled recycled through the pipes and then the actual heat rejection is done with what's called a dry cooler where you're blowing air across a coil and that rejects the heat. It's very similar to the cooling system is in your car. So in that sense, there are a lot of gallons of water inside the piping systems, yes, but once you fill them up, you're not consuming any more water other than the toilets that you have in the building, which is such a low occupant headcount, it's not that much water usage. But whereas the previous designs from years past were these evaporative coolers, you see these big water towers and you see waterfall cascading down like a waterfall over fins, that technically is a more efficient way to cool things, but you're consuming a lot more water because that water is evaporating and you're having to replenish it. So a lot of technology companies, because of concerns of sustainability, are coming up with more sustainable design, designs that they are implementing on their projects. And that's the project that I'm working on now. Well, the other I was going to kind of mention is, again, because technology keeps changing, even though they have to replace the computer servers, the customers also every, and I don't know if it's five years or 10 years, but it's not like like they're coming in and they're reconfiguring the way that their data center racks are laid out or they're potentially changing the electrical systems because of the electrical demands it seems for a lot of these computer servers. So it is not uncommon where we've been in projects where the customer asks us to come back 10 million, 10 years later, five years, eight to 10 years later and spend tens of millions of dollars in construction dollars to retrofit their existing facility. So again, I guess I'd like to offer for you, if you were to ever move forward with a data center in your community, more likely than not, at some point in the future, five, 10, eight years, that that customer will come in and renovate their building to make it current with whatever the current infrastructure needs are for their computer servers. So it's, it's not like you build it once and it stays that way for the next 20, 30, 40 One of the things I wanted to share with, and part of it's just the culture that we have on the project site, our craft, you know, the end is inside in our project. We actually are turning over some preliminary buildings to our customer in a month to allow them to start to prep the buildings to get ready. Our first data centers get turned over to the customer next springtime. Our craft are already asking like, hey, where's the next job coming from? And what they're worried about is if there's not another large-scale data center project that's going to be here in the metro area, and I know that this project won't start, but I, I want you to understand the construction workers enjoy working on these projects. They enjoy working on a project that is a multi-year project. There's stability for them that they're going to be working on a project for a long period of time. And again, it's a good high-paying wage, they're making overtime on the project, which they don't always get on other projects. So they keep asking, hey, where's the next data center project that's coming from? And unfortunately, if there's not other large-scale projects happening in our community, then those people a lot of times get asked to be travelers and they're going to other states where technology customers are building other, other projects. Jesse, I think you know, Brian, you had asked a question about the other communities. I'll speak a little bit about where Mortenson has built other data centers. A lot of times other data centers have been in pretty isolated areas, not even close to metro area, nothing like Rochester, nothing like the Twin Cities. And what happens is the development kind of starts to grow to where the project is because of the demand. And again, it's things like additional gas stations, additional hotels, additional restaurants to support not only the construction builds, but I think it's also to support that you would now be employing a couple hundred people for full-time employees for the life of that project type of thing. So what we've seen is that that inevitably, construction goes to it. The other thing is you tend to see a lot more residential home buildings that are asked to be built in your community because even as a construction worker, the construction workers can be on a site for 18 months. A lot of times they would prefer to live in a house that's close to the job site than driving the 60 or more miles away. And again, they're moving their families. I would say from the supervisory staff, again, on the project I'm working on, Mortenson has 75 people working on the project. That is supervisory office-based staff. Our trade contractors have about another 100 people supervisory office staff. I would say half of those people were based here in the Twin Cities or the other half Or the other half of the people are what we call construction travelers and they go from data center to data center. When those people come to the community, some people rent, but some people try to rent a house, some people try to buy a house. So again, within Mortenson, we have dozens of team members that have bought houses in the Rosemount, Apple Valley, Lakeville areas because that's where they're going to be living for the next two years. And for them, in terms of, you know, their family situation, they would rather be in a, in a single-family home than renting an apartment. So again, that's things that we've seen with, because of the scale of these projects and because of how long it takes to build it. I think I'm through with my notes.
Any other questions for Blair?
Just like, you said at the beginning hyperscale. That is what you're working on now as far as at Rosemount. Is there an indication as to what this one, is this going to be a hyperscale complex also? This is, okay. So does that mean it's AI-driven? Is that what a hyperscale, oh, it doesn't mean that. Okay, it just means it's a hy, hyperscale information data center.
Yep, hyperscale in the industry is really referencing the size of the project. And I'll be quite blunt, how much electricity it takes to power all of these tens of thousands of data servers. That's, that's what hyperscale means to me, or just a large-scale data center. Within the industry, previous data centers were what we kind of defined production data centers. So again, if you're saving information or you're doing searches on the web, these production data centers is what was serving them. Where the industry is headed, where we think the biggest demand is going to be moving forward the next five to 10 to 15 years, it's hard to project out fast yet, that's going to be our AI-driven data centers, which is much more computational data centers rather than just storing data. So to be very blunt, if you're, if you have pictures saved on your phone and you've saved them on the cloud, those pictures, images are saved on a production data center. If, and, and technology companies are still trying to figure out how they're going to generate revenue with AI. But AI, they create learning-based models based on how people search for information or trade information. And then they use that information, they create learning models that then are able to do analytical computations to make things easier for people moving forward. So what I'm saying in a long, roundabout way is more data centers moving forward will be AI-based because that's where the demand for the industry is. But there will always be a need for production servers, which is where people are storing information. Because, and again, I don't have the, but when you look at the GIB, like how much information is stored today versus five years ago? It's an exponential graph showing how much information is stated. People joke, like anytime you've ever saved anything on the web, that information is saved forever. And what that really means is it's saved in a data center somewhere forever.
If I may, so Philip, you spoke about this earlier in our meetings and Blair, you kind of touched on this. So they're, you know, economically concerned, there's, you know, what if the AI is a bubble and it bursts? And that doesn't happen, so now all these data centers got, got touched. But you just touched on that, I think, pretty importantly, that production data centers are still going to be in demand and will kind of always be in demand as we have been transitioning into these devices. So that there's sustainability in this marketplace for data centers, even though we're in a huge up cycle right now because of the demand that AI is generating.
You know, I would say our research and every indication is there is no one in sight on what's going to happen with data center growth, which is why there's such a demand to ask communities, are, you know, can we build your dat, build a data center in your community? If a data center doesn't get built in your community, there will be five data servers built somewhere else in the country. There, there are other people that are welcoming economic developments. You just have to make a choice whether you want it to be in your community. But, but the, the demand for the consumers is out there, which means the technology companies will find a place to build their data centers. The other thing that again, I, I, a lot, I assume might be just a little bit of personal bias, but technology companies prefer to keep this information in the domestic US. So even though you could potentially build a data center internationally, there is a comfort level in the big technology companies to build it in the United States where they know that they can protect and guarantee the privacy of that information. And consumers have no tolerance if they feel like that their data's been compromised.
Any other questions for Blair?
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming here tonight. We appreciate it.
Okay, I'm just going to briefly touch on the applications. You guys are aware of the number of applications that are necessary in order to get us to this first phase of entitlements. And so what's, I guess I'll just focus on what's upcoming now. Planning Commission, you know, we're, we're working through all three phases now of the PUD, the variances, the preliminary plat, and the development agreement. And like I said earlier, we're, we're now really close to having the majority of the terms of the development agreement identified and defined and finalized so that that, again, solidifies the commitments that are being made through this whole process. I wanted to just kind of talk about the PUD piece of this. You know, when the land was annexed into the city, it automatically was zoned urban reserve. That doesn't really allow or carry any development potential with it. Rezoning the land to I-2 essentially establishes that any development would have to comply with the underlying development code, development structure. The PUD, except in the instance of height, the way that we've set up the PUD is it is more restrictive than the underlying development code. This PUD is to the benefit of the city. It's not, it gives, it takes away developable area from, from, say, the developer, but it gives, it puts on the guardrails that the city's looking for with the greater setbacks, the greater natural buffers, the increased tree planting, et cetera. So we're looking at with this PUD, anywhere on the order of the development standards being 3.75 times to 10 times greater than the underlying development code. So just kind of wanted to establish what, I know it's a lot of, a lot of words on that PUD page, but all those words are establishing a more restrictive development framework than your underlying development code. And ultimately, what we get to is what would be a future site plan. Again, this is just a representative image of that. But this is representative of create, going through these zoning efforts and the PUD efforts to get to a point where the buildings have to fit within that development framework. That got moved to the wrong spot. I'm going to have to fix that, I think.
Can I quickly talk about that last one? Are we moving on to the next one already?
This one.
No, before that.
Yes.
Yep, so the zoning. So there's housing right next to it. Has anyone been offered anything for them to sell their homes since you're building 250 feet from them?
No.
Don't you think something should be offered within 800 feet? If you're going to be building something like this next to someone's home?
That's not been a part of the development considerations. Again, this land has been identified for industrial development for 20 years.
It is urban reserve. So I'm just asking, has anyone ever done that in the past for the data center?
Oh, in general, in the data center industry. It can happen with any kind of development scenario. We've not been approached by anyone here asking us to buy their property. We typically don't, that's not typically a part of a development process, you know, at the stage of development.
And I also asked you about some numbers before and you didn't get back to me. Do you have those numbers yet?
The EMF numbers?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And I have, I, we have some slides on that, too. Okay, apologies about that.
If you guys bought up the residential, would I just expand the data center land too, right? So you haven't even larger data center proposed. I don't know if that would help at all, but.
Just to, do we need to clarify this was never urban reserve? This was annexed in to be a-
So, yeah, the only, the only position in which it's, it's urban reserve is, is the transition of annexed in, it automatically becomes urban reserve. But within the application process for the land use, it was, that immediately we're applying for it to be converted into general industrial.
That's just a phase of annex.
Yes, yeah. So, and prior to that, it was outside of the city limits. So it had no city zoning established to it. It was agricultural land in township. The identification of this as land for industrial development came based on our comprehensive plans. So our comprehensive plans do look at, in a future perspective, outside of the existing city limit boundaries and where the, the city would plan to develop based on different types of use. So residential, commercial, industrial types, types of uses. So this has been in our comprehensive plan for the, you know, 22 years that our comprehensive plan is in its current state as, as industrial. Adjacent to the parcel in what was city limits beforehand, as you can see on the map, is our industrial uses. So you have Old Castle, Infrastructure below to the southeast, and then Sustain and Northern Natural Gas has a facility. Not far from that is Invenergy, Mauser, you know, the industrial park that the city developed. So it is contiguous to that. We're not island zoning this as, as something that's not contiguous to industrial use in the city.
All right. Any other questions for this segment? All right.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Trish Cee and I'm a civil engineer with Kimley Horn. I've been working in the data center space since 2012 with a number of different clients, different data center types, kind of seeing the evolution of this industry over the last 13-ish years. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Minnesota's regulatory oversight. So to be blunt in the beginning here, Minnesota has a lot of regulatory oversight. I said this before in front of the similar audiences. I'm going to explain that a little bit more. But even as we look at, you know, compared to our neighbor states, et cetera, Minnesota's very protective for all good reason on all of our natural resources. So there are layers upon and upon layers. And I said this generally, but I'm just going to show you a couple instances or a couple different ways, like what that means. This slide has a lot of words. I'm not going to read all of them. I'm not going to go over all of this. But this is some of kind of general development process, all the way from due diligence in green, moving through development, construction, post-construction. And the point I want to make here is even from the start of due diligence, for example, there are study upon studies that are done on property to understand, A, what you have, you know, what any mitigation would be for the site, what the impacts are. And all of this is done to different industry standards, you know, ASTM standards, SHIP-O, any of the, I'm just looking at a couple of, you know, for some of the cultural resources. For example, Phase 1 is the ASTM standards. As we move along for all of these, in the middle three, you'll notice it's kind of bucketed out to local, state, and federal. So all of them, there are many different industry standards and state requirements that we're looking at for every stage of development. I think this next slide actually illustrates it in a different and maybe a more digestible way. So this is for this project specifically. And I know it's also a little bit hard to see, but it looks at some of the major components of the project, everything from power to air emissions to noise, water, wastewater, natural resources, cultural zoning, land use, all of the, like even these big pieces of the puzzle that we're looking at for a type of project like this. And this is how these agencies are helping us review, permit, assess, study, coordinate, et cetera. So there are, for this project, 33 distinct agencies, departments within agencies, jurisdictions that we're working with for various, all of these various areas. So if somebody wants to say that these projects, you know, pop up and are unregulated, that is simply not true.
33 agencies?
Yep, or departments within agencies, different groups that we are all coordinating with. And that's just for the development side. And, you know, there's another state on the, you know, ongoing reporting operational side as well.
Do any of these things involve the new regulations that the state's working on?
From the new legislation?
Yep.
Yep, they absolutely do. I mean, and it's the same, it's the same agencies, you know, it's working with DNR, for example, in a slightly different way as part of the new legislation. DNR is not here, somebody we would already have been working with and coordinating with anyways. So, yep.
Do you, I guess from a data center standpoint, you know, we went through the AUAR process. I don't know enough, I know enough to be dangerous, but, you know, was it, was that the proper process in your opinion? Or like, do data centers always go through AUAR? Do they go through EIS or the EAW or, you know?
Yep.
Was it done properly in your professional opinion, I guess?
Yes, 100%. It was my opinion. And you'll see the bottom line is environmental documentation. The EQB kind of, you know, looks at a lot of these topics altogether. So it's, it's on the bottom. The AUAR is a great upfront, you know, planning tool and to look at different scenarios of land, which is very commonly done upfront. And I believe it is the right, the right tool to use when you are assessing, you know, what a data center makes sense here? What industrial, you know, what, what are the different, weighing the different scenarios? The other really important thing to point out with that, too, and with some of these agencies, is that there are other triggers that may and likely well require more environmental review and EAW, maybe even an EIS for the end user when the design is known. So there are like multiple, multiple layers and multiple steps. So it's not just, you know, one AUAR and done. There's even more environmental study after that, as you get down to the specifics of, do we need an EAW for air emissions, for example? Once generators are known, you know, the modeling is done, what are the numbers that may be emitted? What thresholds do they hit? So that's why I would feel even more strongly that they're appropriate because they're general upfront, they're looking at it from a broad-based. And then as you get into detailed design, it's oftentimes looked at again in a more detailed manner.
Thank you.
Just kind of follow up on that.
Yep.
And I can't remember exactly in the multiple pages of the AUAR. But with the natural resources and that, it looked like at one point they found all these different species of wildlife or whatever, animals. Like, it looked like there was a two-week period in August or September where they could actually do construction or without interfering with those. I take it they will have to follow whatever guidelines are-
Yep.
-to figure out how to do that. Because as I said, I looked at it, I thought, whoa, this could take 100 years if you can only build two weeks per year.
Yeah, and what I, and what I think that, and again, that will, once a final development plan and impacts and everything, that will be looked at in an even more, you know, further degree of detail. Most, commonly or most likely locally, it is around any tree removal in the summer. Because you cannot do tree removal in the summer because that's when a lot of those species would be nesting or have the potential to nest in the trees. So that's typically what we around here, what we see as like, you know, the most restrictive. But then, yeah, there could be different stick nest surveys and things on site, you know, to review everything before any construction actually starts. I just have two more slides, two things that also we've heard, you know, come up from comments, too, that I want to hit on. One of them is noise. It's regulated by MPCA. The important thing to note here is that MPCA has a very, has a very strict standard, right? So what we are going to be held to is this 50 dBA at nighttime to any residential properties. To equate that to something that's perhaps a little bit more relatable, the chart on the right, the 50's got a red box around it, that is in the quiet, comfortable range. And that is like if you had a, a modern day, I'm going to add an old one, but a modern refrigerator in your house and there might be a background hum that you probably don't really notice, that is what is equatable to 50 dBA.
How far away can you hear that noise?
Well, that, that is measured at that residential property.
Okay, 250 feet?
Yep. And then it's also important to note here that 52 is not quiet either. So that is the dominant source of sound at this time. And it is likely to be, even after it's built, still likely to be the most dominant source of sound. And we'll be doing a noise study, you know, before any building permit issuance. Again, once we can get to that point of having like a very detailed study once the exact buildings and equipment, et cetera, are selected and designed.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is somebody to ask me about it, so I will ask that question on. Is this noise generated by this potential- Is this noise generated by this potential data center? Could it be a constant noise? I mean, is it like an air conditioner running 24/7? Or does like home, mine at home goes on and off?
Yep.
So is it a constant sound or is it intermittent?
Yep. No, that's a really good question. The answer is a little bit, it depends, which I know is not a great answer, because I'll explain it, which I'll give you some more context to it. But, I mean, there is going to be base house equipment that is going to be running, you know, like we would have in any building, majority of the time. The biggest noise, though, that people bring up, and this is the last thing I'm going to talk about after this, is generators. That is the biggest noise scare to people for these sites, and they, those are barely ever run. So even when we do get up to maximum noise for a data center, that's in a, you know, in an emergency period when generators are running, right? And so they are not, so the answer is, you know, the noise is going to vary. And in most operating conditions, it's going to be well under these dva limits. But like with anything at your house or any, you know, there's different equipment that's going to kick on at, you know, different times.
I think they were more concerned about the effect of, even if it's within supposed limits, the fact that it might be constant ongoing. I think that we're less worried about intermittent diesel generator firing up. And we're just worried about having a constant sound present in your life and what that might do.
Yeah. No, and I would suggest, I mean, I've been around a lot of these very large data centers and after they're operational, after they're built, I can't personally hear them, especially from a couple hundred feet away. I really can't. And so, I mean, I would even suggest if you have the opportunity to go out, you know, see one that's operating, it's really impactful. I mean, I've talked to other people that have been out there for the first time, they're like, wow, that was a lot quieter than I was expecting. Or I couldn't hear anything, you know? So. That ties into the last point I wanted to make, or just talk a little bit about onsite generators, since this has been another question that has come up several times. There is likely to be backup generators on the site. You know, that is for the safety of the, you know, a lot of the critical information that's already been talked about today. And I always think about it as a very, very expensive insurance policy. They don't want to have to run these generators because it is only when the grid fails or there's some catastrophic, you know, natural disaster or something that has caused the power to go out. They generally are tested once a month for about a half an hour. You know, if they're not used for emergency, you know, doing the math, that puts them at six hours per year that each of them is individually run. Usually we'll do air permitting for more, something like 10, 15 hours a year, just because then that gives you a little bit of conservative buffer for if there is an emergency scenario as you're looking at air emissions. But again, talking about the regulatory side of it, both EPA and then here in Minnesota and PCA have oversight, and there's different, you know, degrees of permitting, which has, you know, higher degrees of modeling associated with it. I won't read, I mean, they have got limits on a lot of the constituents like NOCs, VOCs, carbon monoxide, et cetera. So I'll, I'll stop there on generators. It's, you know, obviously we stated they're going to be attenuated, have additional equipment put on for sound attenuation and screened. Any questions?
That's actually a picture of a generator?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. No, I was just curious. Then, you know, in the little concept picture, I don't know, like 10 buildings. Is there one generator per building? Does that vary how many per building or?
There's usually multiple per building.
I think they said three per building. That's what I thought.
And it's going to vary a little bit on the end user and, you know, what, what their model is. It also varies a lot with what type of use case and type of information they're keeping.
I believe the agreement, it was, they're all indoors.
In enclosed, probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Not indoors.
Yeah, but have vertical wells.
So I want to comment. So staff, some, we were able to actually give a tour at Invergney. So the backup natural gas plant that has two power generation turbines onsite. We were there during the day they had been, they were running. We, I think we're probably within 100 feet of them, and we noticed a noise, but we also then did further walks around the campus. I think we got to a point where I was, we were on the other side of a building, probably another 50 feet away, so maybe 150 feet away from the one that was running and heard almost no sound at all. Like, I didn't even notice that, that was running. So it was that, and that's a lot bigger than what, what these are. As we got up close and right next to it, yeah, it was, it was very loud, you know, certainly had to raise our voices to talk to one another, but we still could have a conversation as we're getting the tour and getting information from the, from the onsite provider. So just as a, you know, local example of something, so if you were to, you know, not that you'll have the luxury of being invited onsite to go tour the facility anytime, but if you drove by, I mean, we're talking probably pretty close proximity distances and what our setbacks are for these buildings of this project and, and what that is. So if you could be by the road and hear that going, like, imagine these are smaller and probably generating less, not as much noise at the time.
Yep, and just not run horribly at all.
And that was, and they claimed, and their statement was at this time they've been running constantly. They have had demand recently for constant 24-hour generation.
Trish or Kristen, could you, I know you said it probably depends on the end user, but is there a number of generators per building that, that you have maybe in the preliminary plan or no?
There, so each one of those generators is about three megawatts.
But how many would be attached to each building?
It depends on the building.
So, okay.
Yeah. It's just, whatever the, the building size is in general, there, there are about three megawatts each. You divide the number of megawatts by three, and that's how many there are. But it won't be three per, that's where the three came from.
Got it.
Three megawatts each. So it's just math after that to figure how much it is. But regardless of how many, the number, we still have to conform to the same sound.
Can I, can I have one comment to that question?
Of course, of course.
Again, on the project that I'm working on, we have three generators for the entire campus. One of the generators is for the administrative office building, and it's a relatively small generator, just for life safety. The other two generators are to support mission critical if they were to lose power. But what's happening in the industry is these technology companies are finding out because of the concern of sustainability, and it costs them a lot of money to buy the generators, maintain the generators and operate them. They're actually building multiple data center facilities, and that redundancy provides resilience that, again, going back, when you're storing information on your phone, most often than not, your information's being stored in multiple locations. As a consumer, you're never aware of that. But then that way, if they lose power in one facility, you're immediately accessing information from a different facility. So a lot of technology companies are only installing enough generator power just for mission critical to switch, I'd say the, the processors that reroute your information from one data center to another one. So go on to the days when you're seeing 10 generators for each building, because honestly, it's not as cost-effective for these technology companies to buy and maintain those generators for 30 years. Now, can I say every technology company is using that model? No. But a lot of the big technology companies are, are doing everything they can to reduce and eliminate generators on their campuses.
Any other questions for Trish?
I got one. When you talk about the 50 decibels at night?
Yep.
Is, is that taken as far as, is that what the facility is allowed? Meaning, there's going to be noise out there from the highway as well?
Correct, yes. That's what the facility's allowed at a residential property line.
So when you say that the noise level would be at 50 decibels at night, that would be in addition to any road noise that they already have?
Oh, no, no, no. We have no control over what's happening on Highway 52 or the highway. So they're, you know, you might hear what, you're going to still hear what's on the highway. We can't mitigate that.
Right. No, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you are. What I'm wondering is that, is that when they're taking this, the noise measurements, right, they're going to get noise from the facility, and they're also going to get noise from the highway. So is the 50, the max that that number can be on their meter, is that 35 from the data center and 15 from the road? Or are, is tract allowed to have?
Well, you bring up a good point because, I mean, and there will be ambient that will be done. My strong suspicion from knowing other areas is that there probably are times when the highway is already over 50, right? And so we, we just need to make sure, and how you decipher, and that's why ambient noise studies are done, is to understand what's the baseline condition. From our site, we will not be able to emit at any residential property more than 50.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah.
These questions are going to come up.
Fifty.
Do you, does it, I guess there's probably different ways that you have to measure that. Do you feel like maybe there's an explanation of how the sound study would be done? And because I just recently learned some more, but that, that 50 decibel range, there's two basic types of measurement. There's the six minutes per hour exceeding that decibel threshold would, would cause violation of the MPCA standards, or like, I think that's the 55, and then 50 is 30 minutes per, or more than 30 minutes an hour period of measured period exceeding 50 decibels would exceed the permitted levels at night. So as you measure that, you establish like the baseline ambient noise for an area so that when you do test it, you know, you can verify that, oh, we are not exceeding any of the ambient noises. So therefore, we're not generating any new exceed, excessive decibels from what exists in the location today.
Yep, you're correct. And usually the monitoring equipment, either for ambient or for operating, is put out there for at least 24 hours, if not more. So you're getting, throughout the day, and you're being able to look at, what they call that, yeah, the L10 or the L50, like 50% of the time or 10% of the time exceeding it. And so that, yeah, that's where you would be able to compare the ambient existing if I'm doing this, because I'm thinking about it like a graph, you know, and be able to see the difference.
Then, again, additional piece. So you're studying in advance of the permits being issued to build the buildings. So then if the, if and when the buildings are operating, typically who would be enforcing this if somebody had a concern and a resident had a concern saying, hey, I believe the data center is causing, exceeding the permit, permitted levels? Who would they call? I know the city has some authority and MPCA has authority.
MPCA.
MPCA. And as my experience, MPCA, actually, this is something they would address for themselves to come out and, and do the study and establish whether or not anybody, that user was exceeding the permitted levels.
I believe that is the case. Fortunately, not had to go to that point with MPCA, so.
That in 12 years of doing it, that's a telling, telling statement.
So I am going to move on, and everybody stuck with me, just to introduce the next one before we hand it off again. So now we're going to dive into water and wastewater. And I'm just going to give an overview on this one slide of what we've got, a couple people to talk about in some more detail. So if anything, just try to pick up on the points for this overview, if you don't want all the details of the water, wastewater. But number one, I want to drive home that data centers really are absolutely trying to optimize the water and power usage for the highest overall efficiency and sustainability. And for this site, we looked at the wells and the appropriations from the DNR of all the water used around the site roughly six miles in any direction of the site. The water requested for this site is 1% of the water used. It's even less of what's appropriated, but of the water that is used, it's 1% of just a six, you know, six miles from the site. So not a very large area. If we look on site of a net water use compared to what the existing well has appropriated versus what is being requested, there's only 2 million gallons of year difference, which that net increase is equal to like one small 40-room hotel. So I think if a hotel, a small hotel came in, I don't think water would be such a huge narrative, if at all. There's $9, $10 million of private money, of private funding for water and sewer upgrades that will be for citywide benefits. That is not just for the development. That will help the city as a whole. And there are 142 million gallons a year of approved appropriations available for use between the city and the onsite well. And just noting, we've said this before, but the onsite well would be used only for emergency uses. So that water is effectively, you know, being reserved or not taken out of that well that aquifer. Having these DNR appropriations in place signifies that it's been studied that water use will not adversely affect neighboring wells or be a detriment to the aquifers. So that's the click notes version of the, of the water points. I'm going to hand it off for a little bit more detail. Do you mind? I'll stay here and progress the slide.
Perfect. You got it, Bill?
Yes.
All right.
I was asked to address this slide because this was actually what the city prepared. Then the following slides after this kind of go into more detail, so I'll probably throw that back to the tract folks. But I just wanted to, city council, you've heard a lot of this, but I'm just going to repeat it again, and I'm trying to do it in a quick fashion. So what we did is we looked at the water system. So what comprises the water system? So that's our water tower. That's our three wells. Then we also look at what we call fire flow. So in a fire, how much water can we provide? We also look at our booster station, because we have a booster station that serves the area here. And then we also look at our groundwater appropriations, with all those parameters of the water side. On the wastewater side, we basically, there we look at the various parameters of wastewater plants. We look at peak flow, max flow, average flow, and then we look at the strength of the wastewater. And so through that analysis, and some of it summarized right here, I'm sorry, then we also look at the growth of the city. Forgot that part, sorry. And what we did is we looked at, okay, what is the city reasonably going to grow in the next 20 years? Well, the city, how you project that as you look at, well, what's the city done the last 20 years or 40 years? And really, the city, Cannon Falls hasn't grown. So John and I have met, we talked, and we said, all right, what do we think is really high growth? What's the, what would be a lot? And we said, if the city grew 150% in the next 20 years, that would be beyond probably what would ever happen, but it'd be really conservative. And that would, and then if we said, what if we used the maximum water that we did? So basically, because what we're seeing, when new people come in, newer fixtures, newer things in houses, we use less water. But what if we said, we're going to, not only are we going to be 150% more, we're also going to use water at our current rate. Then we said, okay, once we do that, what do we have available? That is what we would feel comfortable saying is available for tract. So when we did that, we said, okay, what does that leave for them? Then what that leaves of our groundwater appropriation, which the DNR tells us how much you can use, which was 250 million gallons per year, that left about 17% of our appropriation for them. And John and I, we said, we feel comfortable with that. So, okay, what makes me comfortable with that? Well, the first thing is, we did the math. Secondly, we went and talked to our water operations department. Thirdly, we went and met with the DNR. So we met with the regional, the two groundwater specialists for the area, and we said, what's your opinion? And they said, we have no concerns. Thirdly, then, we also looked at something called specific capacitance of our wells. So how much, what's the groundwater level? When we pump it at this rate, how much does our groundwater levels drop? Our wells barely drop from what we're pumping today. So based on those factors, John asked me point blank, Bill, do you have any concerns about the water consumption? My answer is no. I have no, okay. Based on the information I know today, no concern, okay? John, we were talking like, well, what would be something? Well, if we had some, you know, extreme drought or weather conditions, even then, I really have really no, no, no fear. Mainly because we are, our aquifer here provides a lot of water. We're barely using what we have as far as, we measure wells and drawdowns. When you start pumping, how far does the groundwater go down? It's on the order of magnitude of like 10 feet. That is very minimal. That is very modest, very small. So we are very confident that we have the capacity, capability to provide the water. On the wastewater side, it's even less. So at the maximum flow, they would use about 20% of our capacity. All the other parameters, average daily flow, daily flow, and then how we measure the strength are more in the 1% to 2% of our capacity. So we actually have a lot of excess capacity that in all honesty would be beneficial for our rate pairs to sell some of that. So I kind of superseded all the items on here and I just wanted to cut to the chase. And then there's more slides here that the tract folks will go through. But really, we feel very confident on the water side and wastewater.
And Bill, can I ask you to clarify too? You said it could drop 10 feet of that water column for that drawdown test. What's the, do you know roughly what the footage of that water column is for the well?
I'm sorry, I'd have to look it up. It's in several hundred.
I was going to say it's in the hundreds of feet.
Hundreds of feet, correct. So really, we are almost in what we call an artesian situation where the groundwater almost comes out of the ground.
Yeah.
So we have a great water.
I don't recall the, I don't recall the statements, but we were asked by DNR like, so what is your, what are your head levels at for wells in this? And we, they're like, are you in the 100-feet column area? And we're, no, we're like in the 10 to 15. Like, oh, you're very high.
Yeah, our groundwater is like seven feet below the surface.
So. I think you kind of just answered this, but I told someone that I would ask it. So where is the wastewater going? What are the differences between the treatments needed to clean it up versus what's being done with the city's current water? I've been told by professionals in water treatment that if levels of treatment are too diverse, the process is hard to control and increases cost to taxpayers. And it sounds like you just answered that and said the opposite. If we add, our sewer is short, it costs more for taxpayers.
All right, you asked me several, you asked me several questions in our chat. So I'm sorry, which one do you want to start with there?
Well, I really think the last part is kind of what, I've been told by professionals, the water treatment, its levels are too diverse, meaning we're adding to it, that's that's going to be.
Okay, so that is something we, generally we are concerned about. We have what we call clean water discharge. So the water that's coming out of the data center really is, it's clean water. Or what I mean by that, it does not have organics in it. So it's not like wastewater, you look, it's brown and, you know, takes oxygen on water. It's very clear. So what we worry about is if we had low-strength waste, we would have too dilute wastewater because our wastewater plant here operates biologically. So it breaks down, organisms break it down. But because of our other industries in town, our relative strength is on the high side. So actually, a little dilution would help us. So what we did is we looked at that. So we looked at was the concentration of incoming waste. If we had this developed one forward and mixed in that concentration, we would still be well within the range of capability of our plant. So, sorry, Chad, that?
That covers most of it because you just talked about the rest. But I read the whole question and I think you covered it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Bill?
And first of all, thank you for all the work and all the studies and all the information. Just a couple of things, and just my curiosity, how many people use, it's the Jordan aquifer that we use, is that, how far does that extend? How many other users are on it?
I don't know that answer, but I know it generally extends to Mississippi River. It extends Peralley just to the north of Des Moines. Not sure how far north and west, but it's.
It's huge.
It's huge, correct.
Cuts across parts of Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, and Iowa.
And so, by the way, one other comment on that. The legislature this last year, because of the concerns with groundwater, did set a limit that you'd have to do more study on it, 100 million gallons per year for a data center. So we're even below the minimum threshold to study. That's part of the reason why I went up to the DNR. They just said, we're not concerned because really realistically, this is a small amount of water. Our actual 150% growth is more than the amount that we would allocate to the data center.
But they want more. They want 200, 300, 400 in the future?
No, they, so what we said is 43 million gallons per year is what we are comfortable with. And that is, we said, that's all you get.
That's the allocation at full buildout. The entire campus being built out and operating, they would only have an allocation of 43 million gallons. They're not asking for anything beyond that.
And they've told us that that is acceptable. That's what John and Shelley have worked on memorializing the development.
Yep, and those are in the development agreement as a standard that we have, our teams have accepted, both the tract and staff.
With, with the extensive, with the Jordan aquifer being in so many different areas in different states and not being able to therefore know what those other states, you know, if they start allowing huge, you know, withdrawals from this, that would eventually affect us. If we were ever given an order from Minnesota DNR that said, okay, your allotment for the town because of overuse for all these other people, we don't have as much and we're going to cut your allotment, would that also mean that all of our industrial uses, users would also get reduced?
I want a quick comment. In our conversation with the DNR, they discussed that allocation amounts very rarely are reduced. Of the 250 million gallon allocation that we have today, that I believe the statement was that that wouldn't, you know, it would take some really extraordinary circumstances in which we would be told to reduce that allocation. So they did discuss, like, we asked the questions about, okay, so what if we are running up into the point at which that is increasing and we need to ask for more, at what time do we do that? And they said, as soon as you, as close to that maximum allocation as you're going to get, not, you know, a few years in advance. They don't want to, but with that, there would be a lot of requirements for studies. You did mention earlier, you had some experience going on now in Rochester in terms of what they're running it to. So they're looking at a cap of that.
Rochester, City Rochester, basically all Wolf's economy is looking at a groundwater sustainability study of the Jordan aquifer right now. Primarily, they're looking at surface water impacts primarily to what a special type of wetland called a calcareous fin. So, but yeah, so that's ongoing. But again, just a, I can't put my exact words, we asked them, John, but we peppered the DNR very questions, many questions. Really, the answer was they did not have any concerns. Another one of the reasons why, and I'm going to highlight what Trish said earlier, so that piece of land already has an appropriation of, I think it was 40 or 41 million gallons per year. So there's only a delta of 2 million gallons. That was the one hotel. That's partly why, another reason why we're not concerned is because they already can pump that much water now with that irrigation well. So again, there's the change to our areas. I hate to use insignificant, but it really is insignificant.
Isn't the current irrigation well though from a different aquifer?
It is, correct. Yep.
So one question I have, and we've kind of hit on it a couple of times, and I know you guys have gone through the tentative agreement and whatnot, but I've heard from residents, you know, how do we hold these people accountable? What if they go over 40, 40 whatever million gallons? Have we approached that? Have we teased out those details in the agreement? How do we hold them accountable, I guess?
So typically how that works is there's a development, this is our development agreement we have. Then when we have an end user, we have what's called a significant industrial user agreement. So that's an agreement that spells out the rates and the costs. So the first measure that you typically do is you charge them more, but then also we have the authority at some point to shut the valve, you know? But typically, the DNR doesn't necessarily want that to happen as well, you know, so then we work with them, you know, to stay within their limits. But we put, we have penalties in place and we do have the authority. At the end of the day, we do have the authority to close the valve. That's an extreme measure. And we have that same, by the way, we have that same with our current industries. We have four significant industrial users now. We have that same ability. We can do that to Canon Equipment, to Gemini. We can do that to them as well, but we obviously want to work with them before we, you know, turn the water off to Gemini, for example.
There, I actually had experience in my previous city, receiving orders, directive from DNR to reduce municipal consumption as a whole. So they provide some offers of saying, hey, maybe go to alternate day irrigation things because due to an extreme drought. I mean, it was, those were the circumstances. And we were more, probably more impacted by the drought conditions because of our, where our wells were located and their proximity to the Mississippi River and the conditions that the Mississippi River were experiencing during that drought. So we did move to complete ban of all irrigation during that time. And it extended, we had to carry on those extra measures for months. And we were able to sustain and moved into that without having to disconnect either industrial users or redo, you know, force reductions on industrial users or residential consumption. DNR establishes the highest priorities of use, municipal use as one of the highest priorities, but they do then lean on those municipalities to really be the arbiters to control how that, the water that they're pumping or using for the system, how that is managed. So it is, they, we do have some pretty significant authorities in terms of what we can do. Yes, again, we work to communicate first, foremost, like, hey, don't go over, set, you know, don't exceed. But in the end, if push comes to shove and no compliance happens, we have that.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, one last comment because we kind of covered a lot of their slides, so we chose to skip them. But really, okay, what if we have staff, what if we focused our attention on? We're not worried about the supply. We're more worried about how we get it there. What I mean by that is the piping. Which route do we take? Which side of the road do we go on? Really what we would like to see, we want a water tower. We think a water tower is more, I'm more worried about a water tower than I want the groundwater. You know, I'm more worried about how do we get the sewer pipe there? What do we do when we're doing, you know, fourth this year? You know, make sure we get our job done. Those are really the things that have been more on the top of our mind. And those things are all the things that John and Shelley have been working with to make sure we get in the development agreement and make sure they're paying for all that, you know, or at least on the sewer and water pipes to the site, which is a.
Or a significant portion of it.
Yeah, well, the water and sewer to the site, yeah, we've kind of glossed over that. That's a huge improvement to the city. They're paying all of it. You know, the same thing with the water tower, they're going to be paying a large portion of it because we need to do water tower work as well. So that's what we've been focusing most of our time on because we felt we've really answered the water side really early on. Because that was a, it was kind of a stopper. If we don't get past this, we don't think we can do it, we got to, we got to stop.
Yeah, that was, that was the critical point of doing this study in the first place was to understand what do we have for capacity? Because if we're not, if we don't have enough or we don't, if we have an amount that's lower than what they could market for the site, then that pretty much stops our conversation. So that's why, again, we determined that pretty early on back in June, July timeframe of finalizing those studies to say, and, you know, establish with them and send them those numbers. And that is, and since that point, we've been continually working forward to figuring out those, like Bill said, those ladder questions. How do we get it to you? And how do we get it back when it goes back to the city?
So you're fairly confident that, I know with the Fourth Street project, you're already building bigger pipes and everything. So you've got a handle on making sure we can get the water out there and the other stuff. I mean, I'm assuming you do.
Absolutely. Yes. And one last comment, I won't say anymore. Then on the wastewater side, we actually need people to, you know, we are in the business of selling capacity. Why, to get the rates lowered for other people. We have a plant that's been underutilized for 20 years or 20 plus years to the point now where next year, we're going to be doing some improvements on the plant. You know, and they're going to help us pay for that. They're going to pay their 17, 20%. You know, that's a big benefit to the city because whether they're here or not, we got to make those changes. We got to do those projects. So, all right, that's it.
Thank you, Bill.
Excuse me, can I say one thing, please?
Of course, of course. Just was brought up, someone mentioned something about a closed-loop system earlier tonight with the water. Would that, is that just in its infancy or is that something that could be used to help? If it's the same use of water, that means you'd be using less water if you're using a closed-loop system, or am I wrong there?
Yeah.
Phil?
So I'll just turn the mic so I can talk to you. So there's a continuum. There's dry heat exchange that just uses air, but that's, it's thermodynamic. So one is, one is less efficient, uses more electricity, and it uses less water than when you introduce water. You, if you were to use a, like you said, you know, a cascading cooling tower, that's probably the most energy efficient, most thermodynamically efficient, but it uses water. So somewhere in the middle is where all the technology is residing now. And it's based on location, geography, availability of water. But, you know, some water with some air is probably the right answer. And that's where the industry is going. But it is, you'll see different technologies spread throughout the country because you all have different climates. You have different relative humidity, you have different access to water.
So would the closed-loop system be advantageous for like the people that are concerned about the water levels? Would it use as much water?
Most, most of the, most of the systems have a closed loop, but it's the, it's the heat exchange on the other side that can be open loop. And so you'd want to, you'd want, you can either cool that, that closed loop with air, it's less efficient, uses more electricity, or you can close, you can cool that loop with, with water. Or you can use a hybrid system. And most systems right now are going hybrid.
So when you say hybrid, does that mean less electricity, less water? Or?
You're trying to find the sweet spot based on your climate.
Yeah, so.
There's not one answer.
I think in terms of this, because tract is not the end user, the end user is going to design their system probably with keeping in mind the allocations that they have. So if, as Trish said, the goals of the industry for data centers is to find the most sustainable, efficient measure, and you're saying like efficiencies of energy use and costs are for more water to be used versus more electricity to be used. Well, there's a limit. We are establishing a limit to that. So, right? That's, that's the point of the allocations. We're saying there is a cap, an actual gallons cap of how much water they can use in the system. So it would probably be, in my, this is, I guess, my logic, so if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But I would think if I'm trying to balance out what Trish said, I would probably be looking at a system that hybridizes it to the extent that I maximize the most energy efficient use with the amount of water that I have available to me because it's the lowest cost. But what, that's where we wanted to say, we don't want to have the door open to an endless amount of water. It's specific to saying, you know, this is what we can allocate, feel comfortable with, that we're not jeopardizing, creating other problems on the backend if we allot this to this project. That was the work that we, we tried to do.
All right. We are approaching, we're just under the two-hour mark, and I do want to be respectful of everybody's time, obviously, tract. A lot of you guys have traveled very far to be here for this presentation, all the council members and commission members. Very good questions, do appreciate them. If there's anything we can do to maybe pick up the pace just a little bit so that we can all be out of here before 10:30. So, next slide. All right, the handoff.
Well, Bill answered a lot of my questions or a lot of my presentations, so.
Ethan, if you don't mind, Ethan's got a lot of great information in here. Ethan, do you think it's relevant just to flip to the public infrastructure to be paid by tract part? Sorry, Mayor, he's got a lot of great slides that you guys can read, but we're all pretty comfortable with it, so.
Yeah. Yep.
Sorry, Ethan.
Just, I'll add on to Brian's question a little bit here, just to provide a little bit of context here. So that 43 million gallons a year that we're requesting is the max water use that could be utilized, that full bill of that, which is expected in about 2035. And that's based on kind of a hybrid direct evaporative system that Philip kind of explained here. And that type of system recycles water about three to five times before it does discharge the water into, whether it's the city system or it infiltrates into the ground. So they are very efficient systems that don't just use water once. In fact, Minnesota statute doesn't allow once-through systems. So they are very efficient and they still do recycle water and can't even recycle more water if it's treated properly. So, and I just wanted to highlight this slide real quick that, so we've kind of requested our allocation to be broken out in phases. So we would not be requesting that initial 43 million gallons a year until 2035. So our phase one allocation that we're requesting is about 10 million gallons a year. And that would, the requested delivery date would be about 2029 there. And then it kind of steps in a way, as, as in theory, more buildings come online, it would require more water. But we wouldn't be entitled to that water until we provide, you know, documentation and evidence, you know, that future phases beyond phase one would require that. And that's in case. in case, say, someone does go to a fully closed-loop system, that does not tie up the city's resources. So, you can use those appropriations elsewhere as you, as you would want. Yeah, so I think that was kind of what I wanted to cover. Mike, I don't know if you have any additional context to add here, but...
Not much. I think we've covered everything by now, which is good. Mike Brammack, Killenhorn, I've been doing water wastewater engineering on data centers for a few years now. First slide is really just telling you what Trish said. We did take a look, the six-mile area, both sides, the 43 million gallons out of the 7.2 billion gallons of water appropriated, you know, and out of that 7.2 billion, 4 billion were pumped out of that six-mile area. So, it's 0.6 percent of the wa, of the water appropriations and 1 percent of the water pumped. That's the demand of the system. Just a quick look at the aquifers. We've talked about the aquifers quite a bit, the blue, really bright blue, that's the Prairie DuChene aquifer. That stems from just outside Mankato all the way to the Mississippi River, from about St. Cloud to the border of Iowa. That's kind of your area you're talking about. The yellow band right below that, that Prairie DuChene, is where most of the irrigation wells are in the area. That is that aquifer. The Jordan is where most of the municipal water systems and a lot of the domestic are in the area, and that's just underneath the Prairie DuChene. There is some interaction between them. Next one, you know, we're just talking about the wellhead protection area, because it was brought up, one of the questions was really, you know, how is this going to affect the aquifers? When you look at aquifer usage, the water in the aquifer, if it's not a highly susceptible aquifer, is about 21 to over 50 years old. What was looked at with the city wells, that blue line represents how, if you put a drop of water on the ground, it takes 10 years to get to the aquifer at that blue line. Where the majority of the project is outside of that, so that's how long it would take to recharge, to have a drop of water recharge the aquifer. And studies that have been done by Met Council, they look at, you know, infiltration, the aquifers are recharged by about nine to 10 inches of precipitation over, over the course of the year on average. That's how much water gets to the aquifer across the area, is about another nine to 10 inches. Talk about industrial wastewater options, is this, a lot of companies, you know, we've talked about, yes, the city has plenty of capacity, which is unusual in a lot of communities with these systems, because these, these give a lot of clean water, as Bill said, they can upset a normal wastewater treatment plant. What a lot of end users have looked at is sustainability and looking at rapid infiltration basins, or irrigation to crops, or other methods of discharging the wastewater, to not put it on the plant, but help to recharge the aquifer. Again, it's very clean water, we've been in discussions with PCA about it on other sites, they're all supportive of it. It's another, meets another sustainability goal, and a goal of the Met Council and other areas throughout the state for helping recharge aquifers. And then the last one is just an overall general slide of just what a water cycle is. Normally, data centers usually have about two-thirds of the water is evaporated into the air, and it can either come, and then we'll take a third of it, infiltrate it back into the, into the ground, or it'll go through the river to the, through the treatment plant to the river. Rivers also help recharge the aquifers as well, and that's another source of recharge. The evaporation does spark rain, not necessarily around here, but other areas, and that does help recharge the aquifer in most areas.
Is there chemicals put in the water?
Chemicals are biodegradable. It's no different than what you would put in your drink, what's put in the drinking water today, to stabilize the water. It's chlorine, it's permaginate, just what's injected to the municipal wells, same chemicals. With that...
All right. Thank you very much.
Turn it over.
All right, Jake Steen, I promise the end is near. I'm the last speaker, and I promised the mayor that I would cover two slides.
All right.
But, but these are, are two important slides, and we heard a lot about this from planning commission and city council, and particularly staff throughout this process. I have to say, your staff has really held the line. We heard loud and clear from the very beginning that we are going to cover all costs associated with this project that we are occurring. So, again, this is a binding contract, not just with us, but with the end user. It will run with the land, and it is, again, an enforceable contract, and in addition to all of your other police standard authorities as, as a city, there is a conditional use permit for this project. So, if it is in gross violation, the city has authority with respect to revocation permits. So, again, we have been going through all of this to make sure that the city and the public and Trac and our end user all have assurances of what this is going to look like. So, you've heard a lot about the infrastructure, and a lot of what we've been working on, as Bill mentioned, is the public water and wastewater line extensions. If you look at this picture, it shows the, more than a mile of both water line and wastewater lines that will be extended from the city's existing system out to this site. And what that will do is be a catalyst for all of the land in between, and it will allow them connections to the city's water and wastewater system. So, we typically see this as a catalyst for future development. We have this development agreement currently drafted where this will be bid out, and as soon as a bid is accepted, we will write a check to the city, and it'll be in escrow. So, you will not be expending additional dollars out of your taxpayers' pockets. Realistically, this line, assuming that everything goes smoothly and is approved, could start even as early as the end of next year. It's about a $4 to $5 million outlay in capital, and we'd anticipate that at the outside date, it would be completed in August of '29, but that is likely an outside date. There's also, as part of that, there's going to be a looped water main internal to the site, but it is intended, and it was at the request of the city, to create additional redundancy for the city's system. There's also a water tower that we've talked about, it would be located in the north end of the site. We have, we've agreed with the city, we've looked at the costs of that, and would along, or as a prerequisite to the issuance of the first building permit, there would be a check to the city for $5 million for that future water tower, which covers the majority of that cost. And again, it provides additional storage redundancy, and that would be completed within two years of the first building permit. There are also going to be additional turn lanes and traffic improvements, those would be constructed by Trac, and those would be paid by Trac. So, those would be done in coordination with the city and the county, because that's a county road. So, just a summary of development fees, and this isn't all of the fees, but the summary is, so, capital water improvement charge, that's $5 million that would be paid for the city's future water tower. There would also be a sewer capital improvement charge, and we've been working through those costs, but that would be $1.6 million in total, and that would go towards the additional capacity that is reserved for our end user. There's approximately a $500,000 park dedication fee that would be paid at the time of final plat, and that would go towards the city's park system. Building permit fees, something to keep in mind is, there would be approximately a million dollars in building permit fee revenue that would be collected by the city through its inspections process and permit issuance process. That would occur over the life of the project, but we estimate those at about a million dollars. And then water and sewer usage charges and stormwater charges. These are standard usage charges that every customer pays, it's important that we're paying on an annual basis, I don't know, it's probably even billed monthly, maybe, maybe quarterly, but we're estimating about a million dollars annually, and 13 million total through 2045. So, with that, I'm happy to answer questions. I see one coming.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I appreciate all the figures, I have no problem with the water, the water tower supposedly doesn't come in until we get first building permit. How long does it take to build a building? I'm worried about, there's a part of me who wants to see that water tower in a year before we start the building, so that we have the ability for, to take care of fires and everything else off of that end of town.
And I will defer to Bill, but the reason that we've structured it that way is because that there's not actually a need from our perspective to have a water tower there, but I'll defer to Bill on, on the timing of that.
Diane, we, we thought two years was a reasonable amount of time, plus that's the standard time to build a tower, so we thought those two would be parallel, that was a reasonable way to do it.
And we don't need the capacity that is created by the water tower until the project actually moves forward. And realistically, I don't even think we would need the water tower with the first building, it would probably be subsequent buildings would actually require the need.
Water, water tower.
Yeah, so, that, that, I will say, from my perspective, that was, that is one of the biggest things that we've been hashing out back and forth and trying to align for their project and the payment with the surety that we will not be left holding the bag on any, any sort of project like this. So, so once, you know, that, I want to be clear, the expectation is, where we're, where we're at today, is that building permit comes in, checks right there with it, so that we are not...
We have it drafted, is that the building permit will not be issued without, without that payment going to the city. And as of, we've been working through also the, the wastewater system fee, and we have it drafted, is the first 1.2 million would come in at that same time, before any permit is issued, so that the city can start on those processes while we are working on constructing the building.
Yeah, so, it, it, an effort to help us plan for the costs of those improvements as, as the plant is aging and needs to be replaced. They're entering into the system as a large-scale user, they're basically buying into that capacity in advance, so that we don't have to charge them a higher amount over the life than, than what they, they would be. So, our previous users, they're kind of all paying their way along, along the way, they're coming in later, they're a higher percent, so I think it builds in that equity to the existing users, that, A, that they can, they can come in, and it builds in fairness for the end user over time, that we don't have to go and try to capture more money from them to pay for the, the costs of these, these improvements. So, that, that was really important to us in terms of trying to get these, these elements to all kind of fall into place on the fairness piece, and, and making sure that they're there, so that in case something does go wrong, or something happens, and the project doesn't either, one, get to the building permit phase earlier, we're not stuck starting a project that we don't have the funds to finish, or we have to go find the funds from a different source to finish, and then there's additional costs for the city along the way, or, you know, the project starts earlier, and then, you know, we, we get the, the money associated with that as early as we can.
So, heard a lot about, a lot of things tonight, but, and I know it's in your packet, and it's about the residents and the trees, you're going to have a barrier or whatever there, how long till those get planted? Like, say, and, and real trees, real things that block stuff, like, not like a four-foot tree, but if you get a 10, 15-foot tree planted, now it's got 10 years till the full build-out, those things, by the time it's done, should be a lot, they should help protect a lot of the sound or any eyesores of light and stuff like that. How, how, how do you know about that process, and what are you planning? Because it is in there, no, no details about it.
Right, right, and what we've done is, we've created a framework for the site plan review process, so there will be significant additional city process before anything gets built. But what we've done is we've identified in the PUD the minimum amount of trees that are required, and I think we picked was 125% or 150% of the city's standard. So, those details would be ironed out through that process. We know now that there is a significantly higher amount required, so that any end user is going to take that development agreement, and they know they're going to bake that into their calculus for the, the site plan. And though the timing on that, it's likely going to be at the front end of, of the project when you're post-grading, but that's all going to be hashed out during the site plan review process, which, again, this is not the last time you're going to see this project, there's going to be a lot of city process, and we will work through that at that time, and that will likely be a condition of approval of the site plan.
I would just hate to forget about that, and Ed goes up last, they built seven buildings, like, oh yeah, we need, we simply do some trees. We have a thing in town, wasn't there a fence that was built around somewhere, and 10 years later, there's still no fence?
Right, and, you know, again, it's, it's likely going to be a condition of approval, and we'll, we'll continue to work with the city on, on those details.
Yeah, and in fact, we can work on a condition that requires those trees to be planted early in the development process, so we'll come back to you with that, with that language, and then that would solidify that something like part of the issuance of the first building permit, which could be at the far south end of the site, the trees have to be planted. At some, at some, there will be a trigger in there, and we'll get that language to you.
I want to just make sure that it's identified, we don't need to go into the full depth of conversation about it, because there's a lot more details to be worked out. There, we discussed contribution in previous meeting to the school as part of this agreement, and that is a component that is a part of the agreement, we're not, it's not in the slides, because there's, there's issues still to, to work out with that. However, I do want to just make sure it's known, that, that part's in there. There's more that we want to talk about, but out of respect for our conversation that we have at the school, like, getting into far in those details before the final, final agreement was, was something we didn't want to have to work through tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate that, John, and I would add, we've had really a number of very productive and really positive conversations with the school district. There will be some contributions, they will be integrated into this agreement, the development agreement, to make sure that they run with the land in perpetuity, and that the end user is, is bound by those agreements. So, I'd say stay tuned, and, and we'll get you those details once we've got those nailed out, nailed down with, with the school district.
Any other questions or discussion for Jake? Or Jake, do you have any slides, or are we...
I got my two.
You got your two? All right, all right.
Thank you.
Last call for questions or discussion from anybody on the mission or from council.
I got something else popped up. There was a video floating online about the Rosemont one, and it shows it at nighttime, it just lights, just lighting up the whole thing. That's during the construction time, I'm guessing it's not going to be like that forever, and is it always like that? Did they, someone just capture a video at a random time, and, you know, the guys are testing your light system?
That's a good question. All of the lights that anybody has seen for the Rosemont data center, those are all temporary lights that we've installed during construction for the safety of the craft workers getting to, from where they're parking their cars to where they're doing their work on the job site. So, all of those temporary light poles are just temporary light poles with LED fixtures on. We're currently in the process of putting the permanent site lighting in place, but any pictures or videos that people see, it's all just temporary lighting that we have in place only for construction. Once the construction's completed, those poles and fixtures all get removed. The other part is, again, if you're on the County Road 42, which is the road that runs east-west, people will see a huge parking lot, which we paved, we chose to pave it. That parking lot is a temporary parking lot just for the craft workers, to have a place to park, especially in the wintertime, it's much easier to do snow removal on a paved lot for a couple of years than doing it off of rock. And again, when we are done with a project, that temporary parking lot, all that asphalt gets removed, and it gets all planted with vegetation.
Larry, maybe you can help with this one, I think that same thing was trying to compare the scope of the project that you're working on to what we will be dealing with here in Cannon Falls. You know, off the top, you had the acreage there at the Meta campus?
Yep, so, that, that data center customer purchased 280 acres from University of Minnesota. That's the size of the property that they purchased to, to build their campus at.
Okay, 280 compared to 253, but the shape along the, does it run further, like, not as deep, like, ours is a kind of a goofy shape, it's, I don't, almost, you know...
The Rosemont property, it's a rectangular project parcel of land, and in round numbers, it's roughly a mile wide, and then... it's roughly a mile wide, and then the depth, the height of it, the depth, north-south distance is like probably half, I, Trish, you might know off the top of your head, half mile? It's, it's more rectangular, like landscape format, if you're looking at it in a north-south orientation.
Sure, that's, that's what I was, I mean, acreage, sure, that's one, but it's like the shape, because it's just, it seemed like it was hard to compare, it wasn't apples to apples.
The reality with any site, no matter what project you're building, every site's unique in terms of the, what property is available, then how does the customer want to orient it, their programmatic use of that space on that site.
Anything else from the council, staff? All right, I thank everybody for your time. Thank you to everybody for Trac for spending a long day with us, we really appreciate you guys being here. With that said, if there's no other discussion, I would seek a motion to adjourn. Motion from Diane, second from Chad, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.